Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting for February 13th, 2024. This is an in-person hybrid meeting, and Bridget will share some of the details. Thank you.
Okay, before we officially get started, I'd just like to wish everyone a good evening and welcome to the February 13th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. We are broadcasting this meeting live on Pacific Coast TV's website as well as the local channel, Channel 27. Local Channel 27. A few brief comments for public comment etiquette before we get started. In person, in person and for those that are on Zoom, the Planning Commission Chair will open up general public comment section of the agenda. At that time, community members will be welcome to speak on any of the items that are not listed on this evening's agenda. For the specific items listed on the agenda, there will be a public comment opportunities during this discussion of those specific items. Three minutes will be given to those commenters, and we will begin with the in-person comments first and then followed by the attendees on Zoom. Those wanting to speak in person will be recognized, and this evening I don't have green cards, so if you just stand up and acknowledge, the Chair will acknowledge you to speak and/or virtually raising your hand as it appears online. Please make sure that when you start, please speak clearly, state your name for the record so it's easily to take minutes, and if you're on the telephone only, please push star six to raise and unraise your hand and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. This evening, just remind commissioners and our staff to speak into the microphone for recording purposes and for our public. Also, we did have correspondents go out this morning, and I have posted that on the agenda on the website, and commissioners have received those as well. This evening, we did receive another correspondence which we've handed out to you and is also in the binder going up, and Scott will explain that during his presentation as well. I would like to remind, I would like to thank you for being patient as we do this hybrid meeting, and I'll turn it back over to Vice Chair Gossett to start the meeting officially.
Okay, thank you. Bridget, can you take roll call, please?
We could start with a pledge, then we can do that.
All right.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considering public protest stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have Commissioner Reddick is absent this evening. Commissioner Johannes?
I'm here, thanks.
Commissioner Gorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez, who will be joining us here shortly, so we can, we'll acknowledge him when he attends.
Okay, with that, I would like to ask if anyone from the public would like to speak out about anything that is not on the agenda?
I see none online or in person.
Thank you. Okay, so then, we'd like to move to review the minutes?
We just had one edit Commissioner Gossett brought to my attention. I was missing a question that she mentioned on page five, so second to the last page. I highlighted in orange. She just added, we had the question, the answer to the question, which staff answered, but the question was, in 2018, a meeting, there was a meeting regarding the Bell Bill. Potholes were mentioned by the residents, and the potholes are still there today. Will that be addressed? So I just added that for the record, and the comment and answers are on staff on page six. So that's the only change that I've been notified, but if there's any other changes, feel free to speak up.
I recall a discussion about emergency CDPs that had been had during that meeting, but I don't see them reflected on here. Maybe I missed that?
The emergency CDPs are on page one, item 1A, the landfill, and then number two is 880 Stone Pine Road. Starts on page one, two, three, all the way to page four is the emergency, and then item B starts on page, about a third of the way down, on page four. Is that right, the emergency CDPs?
I think it was a comment that you had made correct, Commissioner.
I think it was about an emergency CDP for, for a project where we weren't making a decision on it. We were just accepting information, and that was on the agenda, and we were talking a little bit about how we were uncomfortable with an emergency CDP and approving it by inference, but not really approving it?
Yeah, I understand.
That whole thing?
Acknowledgement.
So I just didn't see it anywhere.
But it wasn't one of the two that are listed? It was an additional one?
Yeah, it was a.
We had three on there then?
I think it was a discussion or question as to what does it mean when we accept acknowledgement or something to that effect?
Bridget, I happen to be in attendance, so there was a, my recollection is there was a general conversation before we even went to the specifics of those, but it was, I think, focused generally on Stone Pine, but it was a general commentary on the difference between what are we doing as an acceptance under this versus approving, and I think if there is, perhaps maybe if there's nothing critically earth-shattering on these, we could bring it back with going and taking a look at that and amending if that's the choice. I do know that there was some discussion about that, and is there anything that you, that would, that have a problem with delaying two weeks to come back with the revision to those? No one waiting on an appeal or anything for that?
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
That's your, that's your call. I think we can reflect that if that's your choice to do so. I don't want to just go from, from anyone's memory exactly what it was, but I do recall that there was a conversation to that, to that effect.
So I just looked it up because I was curious, and it is, it was the pending issuance of emergency coastal development permit for the landfill.
Okay.
And that's what the discussion was over. Why are we taking up something where we're not actually taking it up? We're just saying that we received information on it. So there was a question about that. That's all.
Yeah, I think, was it, it wasn't recalling your role? Ask, okay. Okay, we can add that. So we're going to postpone the minutes, is that my, okay.
I'm happy to hand the gavel back to you. Welcomes.
For the record, Commissioner Hernandez is now present.
Where are we?
We are just finished the minutes. We're postponing them till next.
Okay, great. Can we move on to item 1A then?
Go ahead, Scott, or, if you permit?
Thank you, Commissioners. Obviously, I'm not Jill. John Dowdy for the record, and glad to be here and assisting tonight. This is regarding the item that was of some consequence on the, on the minutes, and obviously I think the preface to this was at the time, it was our intent to just alert the commission that there was a potential that we would issue the emergency CDP and that work would commence prior to us having a chance to report back to you, given that we were not having a commission meeting in January. So that was the preface to, to that conversation, and yes, it was a bit odd to, but here we are, which is to say that we have now, as of the 24th of January, issued an emergency CDP for emergency work at the landfill. I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty details of this, but it's definitely necessary work to shore up stormwater drainage there as well as the revetment wall that is assisting in preventing landfill movement into and toward the ocean. I can convey to you that work was commenced on that yesterday, and so they are proceeding with construction. They do have provisions in place for wet weather, and whether that depends on what that entails is obviously dependent upon the type of wet weather we get. Obviously, we have a few, three storms that are, they're lined up, I guess, in varying degrees, and so we'll be looking through and working with them should there be any concerns issues, but they have those plans in place and are working toward that. So again, this is a request simply for receipt of the notice that we have issued that emergency CDP, and as always, within 60 days of that issuance being the January 24th, San Mateo County is obligated to submit a follow-up CDP coastal development permit for the work. And that concludes my presentation.
Do my colleagues have any clarifying questions on this topic?
I do, just, and this is just for my clarification. So the emergency is the pending rains that are coming that would cause more damage to the existing?
No, I only, the concern in the emergency CDP was issued because we have a revetment wall that is, needs repaired and stormwater pipe that needs to be reworked, regardless of whether we have any additional rains or not. My comment was only that they started work yesterday, and there is now additional storms potentially on the horizon, and that they are aware of that and are working on their schedule, and just wanted to make sure people were aware of that and that we are monitoring and making sure that that work is done appropriately and in appropriate time. If it's not appropriate, they shouldn't be doing work.
Right, right, and believe me, I really do feel that the revetment wall needs to be repaired, and I wish that it was repaired last year. It's been 12 months since the last storms, and we've had several more storms, and it's now deteriorated even more, so I'm just wondering why the county waited so long to request this to be done, because this could have been a regular CDP at this point, started last year. We would have had that in place now for the repairs without having to issue an emergency CDP. And in reviewing the nature for the emergency in the CDP, it says the structural containment of the Half Moon Bay landfill was damaged, but it's not the containment that I can see that's damaged. It's the revetment wall that's in the perimeter of the landfill. So as far as the definition of a structural containment, maybe I'm misunderstanding what the EPA calls structural containment. I'm not saying that this should not be fixed. It definitely does need to be fixed because it's protecting the coastal trail and also protecting from the deterioration of the coastal trail entering into the landfill portion. So I just want to make sure that when I accept a piece of information, I'm understanding the information that's in the report. So if you could explain to me what the structural containment means, and you know, in the, in the CDP, it does have a photograph, which I thought was great, but it was really difficult to read and to see, because it had the blue lines that I'm assuming are the places where the landfill is, or was? I don't know, and you know, I know this might not have been a subtitle D, meaning it had to have liners, so there was no containment, so to speak, that I can think of. So I'm just wondering if the language is correct? If it's not correct, maybe we need to fix it so that when we accept this, we're accepting the right language, or at least I'm accepting the right language. I can't speak to my colleagues.
Sure. Well, as for the timing and delay, that is a question only the San Mateo County can ultimately answer and respond to. My understanding is that it has taken, again, them some time to figure out what is the appropriate action to take and how far do they go. I think you're aware, as your commission approved a CDP that involved basically geology and geologist drilling and boring to look at what's going on there and to try to figure out what's, what's happening across the board. This is in addition to, to that work and those plans that they're looking at. So part of this is trying to figure out what, whether there is a bigger picture to this or whether this is the limits of what the work could be, and that ultimately is one response, which is that the follow-up CDP is there's no further work that needs to be done and based on our assessment and everything, and that's what they may come back with. It may also come back with substantially more work. Now, my understanding, and again, this is from a very lay perspective with this, but the revetment wall is not there to protect the coastal trail. It is doing that, but it in fact is protecting the stability of the landfill itself at this point. They, you know, although that landfill is back, failure of that will result in migration of the landfill toward the ocean, and so I think it, that is why it's been considered and called containment, because while it's somewhat inland, you know, the landfill being somewhat inland from there, it is far more containment of the landfill than anything else, and yes, the byproduct of that is also protecting the coastal access and the coastal trail there. So that's why, at least that is my understanding, and my conversations over the years have been about, about that. So I think the containment is an appropriate language from that.
Okay, thank you. I just got thrown off by saying it was the structural containment, and knowing a tiny little bit about landfills, it kind of made me question it. I'm not questioning the repair at all. I think it definitely needs to happen. I wish it was earlier and sooner. Thank you.
I, does anybody else have any comments or questions on this topic? I know this is not a hearing on the item. I understand that, and there's a CDP that is formally going to come to us at some point in the future. I think to Commissioner Johannes's point, it's not a rubber stamp, right? We want to make sure that whatever project comes before us complies with the local coastal plan. We have an obligation to provide oversight, and we have an obligation to make sure that the staff reports and the analysis are correct, and we've been talking about this for 10 years that I've been on the Planning Commission, and so it's, I agree that it's a little concerning that we're using emergency CDPs to get work done that should have started a long time ago. That's the concern. It's not a hearing. I think that when the CDB comes to us, I have an expectation that things will be appropriate and tip-top. It's just not a blank check to do whatever you want from a CDP perspective, and so we, I think Commissioner Johannes and I would definitely be holding people accountable to make sure they're following the LCP, but we agree the work needs to be done. It's not a hearing, and I don't have any other comments. Fair enough. Can we make a, I think we have to make a motion to acknowledge that we've received this item? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Done. Okay, let's move on to the next item. And thank you. I, this is important work and needs to be done, but, so, we have item 1B.
Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Scott Phillips, project planner for Creekside, and I've got a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'll give for a little oversight on the project. So Creekside Court, located fairly close to where we're at right now, at the end of Church Street, south of Pillar Cidos Creek and east of Cabrillo Highway, and the site is within the commercial downtown, a mixed-use zoning district that allows for residential use by right. And now Creekside Court is a private street and provides access to 12 existing lots. Total subject area is roughly five and a half acres, and the subdivision improvements are currently under construction, which includes the private roadway and utilities for each of the individual lots. So this slide indicates the lot numbers for each of the parcels that are included in the project. Now, an extensive history of permit review previously took place related to the subdivision, and attachment forward to the staff report, we tried to sort of peel off the previous approvals and, but to give the commission a sort of an oversight on what took place in the, in the past to get to where we're at as far as the subdivision. Now, the last approval was in July of 2021, and that was the, actually the second time the city council approved the final subdivision, or the subdivision. Now, the project before the Planning Commission tonight consists of the construction of 11 new custom two-story single-family residences, and then three of those would include attached accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and then the project also includes one fourplex located on the westernmost residential lot, Lot 1. Now, the fourplex is required to be rented or sold at affordable rates according to the recorded affordable housing agreement that was also previously approved by our city council. Now, let's see, the permits requested include a coastal development permit, architectural review, and a variance to encroach into the street-facing side setback for Lot 10. Now, shortly after this application was submitted, we presented the architectural designs to our architectural advisory committee, and the AAC had some suggested changes, and our applicant diligently made those changes and resubmitted, and you know, and after some review, we presented the revised plans back to the AAC for further review, and then before scheduling the Planning Commission meeting tonight. Now, this slide gives an overview of all the lots with the proposed houses, the footprints, as well as the landscaping, the subdivision landscaping, as well as the individual lot landscaping. Now, one thing to note, Creekside Court, as I mentioned, is a private street. Per the recorded subdivision map, the street's center line coincides with the front property line for lots 2 through 12. So it's a sort of a unique scenario that was included on the final subdivision map that's, in a sense, provides a little more space to work with as far as house design. Now, this chart summarizes the new homes included in the proposal, and as you can see, you know, the 18 individual new units, you know, various, like I mentioned, single-family ADUs and then the multiplex, with a net total of just over 36,000 square feet. Now, the next few slides, I'm going to give a sort of a sample of some of the architectural plans that are included. I also, we also included complete plan sets within the attached to the staff report as well as the subdivision improvement plans under a separate attachment, but I'll go through a few of the architectural plans now. Now, the one of note, Lot 1, that includes the fourplex, it's at the end of the Creekside Court, has a couple of uncovered parking spaces as well as garage units for each, each new unit. Now, all homes, as I mentioned, are, would be custom, designed to fit the unique lots, lot shapes and limited building area per the creek in the back as well as the riparian buffer, and it is of note that it's, it's a more costly approach to have all custom homes as opposed to model homes that are repeated throughout the subdivision, so we're happy about that, that our applicant has elected to go with all custom designs. As you can see on this slide, it's, you know, sort of a unique-shaped lot that creates this, you know, almost the need for a custom home. Now, the two lots on the south side are Now, the two lots on the south side are sort of mirror image, lots 11 and 12. And we've sort of referred these, to these lots as the teardrop lots. Both are, they're not repeats of each other. They're, they're, you know, as I mentioned previously, they're custom homes for lots 11 and 12. And then here's the corner lot on Creekside Court and Church Street. Now, as far as the floor plan for the fourplex, each unit includes two bedrooms, two baths, and a one-car garage that meets the requirements of the R3 zoning district as well as the requirements included in the affordable housing agreement. Rental rates are restricted per the affordable levels noted in the affordable housing agreement. And one requirement is that this would be constructed first before any of the other Now, this slide shows a rendering of Lot 1, the, the fourplex. Notice the garages as well as the covered entryways and second-story porches that provide some outdoor space for each of the units. Now, two doors down, this home, notice the, sort of the black and white, sort of washed look that's gained popularity over the past few years and it's reflected into the home design for Lot 3. And then right next door, you see it's a, sort of an appropriate contrast with the designs, more of a shingle, sort of gray contrast, but with white trim. And you really get a sense of the, the custom home designs when reviewing the renderings. Now, this is the rendering of Lot 12, one of the, the teardrop lots on the south side. There is an attached ADU on the front, but it's been integrated into the design of the house and relatively unnoticedable. And then Lot 10 on the, this is probably one of the more prominent, the most prominent corner and where story poles have been installed along Church Street. Now, as far as the analysis, I'll go, go touch upon a couple of the items that are identified in the staff report, the, the AAC review, residential design guidelines, compliance with our local coastal program, Measure D issuance, as well as CEQA. Now, as far as the AAC review, as I mentioned, two separate meetings took place. Meeting notes are included in Attachment 6. And during the first meeting, the AAC suggested minor changes to some of the residential designs as well as requesting a copy of the approved subdivision improvement plans, the land, primarily the landscape designs, to provide context for the committee's design review of the individual lots. That was provided to the AAC and the applicant revised the plans to address all the items that the AAC suggested. And as a follow-up, the AAC did suggest some modifications to a column on Lot 3, which was also changed, as well as elimination of the chimneys since wood burning fireplaces are no longer allowed. And some other minor changes to exterior materials. And, let's see. Now, at the conclusion of the second meeting, the AAC was supportive, unanimously supportive of the design of all, of the new houses as well as the, the fourplex. Now, our single-family residential design guidelines certainly played a big role in the AAC's review. They concluded that all the houses were, are in substantial conformance with the design guidelines and at this second meeting. Now, as I mentioned earlier, a variance to allow for the new house on Lot 10 was requested as well as, now, this one does have a, an attached ADU as well. And the findings for the variance can be supported, primarily because of the existence of the pillar Cidos Creek in the backyard and the associated riparian buffer that essentially eliminates most of the lot from, you know, development potential. Now, Lot 10 is unique compared to the other lots within Creekside Court in that there is the street-facing side setback that, that, you know, 15 feet. Now, now, without the variance, the massing of the new house would, would be incongruous with the, the rest of the, the designs, the houses along Creekside Court. And this slide, and it shows you essentially the portion of the, of the home that would be eliminated from being developed if it were to conform to the 15-foot street-facing side setback. Now, as far as the corner, we did request review by our city engineer just to verify that there wasn't any sort of line of sight, you know, sort of safety issue. And being that there's a slightly more room within the right-of-way between the curb and the property line, the city engineer concluded that there is no sort of line of sight issue as far as pulling out from Creekside Court get with the building that's been designed Now, as far as conformance to our land use plan, you know, the, the subdivision approval did allow for residential development on these lots. And there was extensive review as far as planning commission, coastal commission, and city council. And the conclusion was that this project does conform to our land use plan and it supports priority land uses including affordable housing and is within the town center, which were, that's one of our focuses is to increase density within our downtown. Now, as far as the environmentally sensitive habitat along Pillar Cidos Creek, a conservation easement has been recorded against the property to eliminate access and preserve the habitat that exists along the north side. And again, that was included with the subdivision map. Now, Cabrillo Highway, the, the town boulevard is considered a visual resource corridor which this project does front. So, you know, the, the project is subject to visual resource protection standards, which is, the project is in conformance with. And story poles were installed, so for lots 10 as well as 1, partially because of the visual resource corridor as well as the, the setback variance that's been requested. Now, as far as Measure D, the site is considered within the downtown for Measure D. And 18 Measure D allocations were issued and are still active. So the, the project is in conformance with our 1% growth limitation and Measure D. Now, as far as CEQA, there was a mitigated negative declaration that was adopted with the tenanted parcel or tenanted subdivision map. And the project complies with the requirements of the previously adopted MND. And so the project is, we would consider this in, in conformance with CEQA. Now, as far as noticing, we did send out notices to all the neighbors within 300 feet. We posted the site. We published a legal notice in the newspaper. I have not been contacted by anybody for this project, either verbally or via email or phone calls. We did request a, or receive an inquiry from a planning commissioner about the previous arborist report that was associated with the subdivision map that was transmitted to the planning commission this morning. And with, you know, some concerns about grading that had been taking place within proximity of the cypress trees along the southern portion of the, the subject property. A licensed arborist did survey the site this afternoon and evaluate the trees and the grading that took place. A, a letter from the arborist was transmitted to the commission this afternoon and concluding that the, the grading that took place did not negatively impact the trees. Arborist did recommend any future grading that takes place, that he be present. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the, the trees. And also, the applicant is here with his design team for, to answer any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. That was an excellent presentation. Normally, we open it up to the applicant for public comment if they wish to speak on the item. So if the applicant would like to speak on their project, we're happy to open public forum for them to begin. If not, we can go to clarifying questions from the planning commission. I can hear you, but the people listening at home can't.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. We are proudly presenting this 12-lot, 12-lot development, which is named the Creekside Court Development and consists of a mid-to-low income fourplex on Lot 1 and 11 single-family homes, three of which have attached ADUs. I know Scott already mentioned all this. Our homes are elegantly designed to enhance the neighborhood and stay consistent with the soul of the community. The present, the presentation to the Half Moon Bay Architectural Advisory Committee was embraced with positive comments and encouraging suggestions. All homes are designed with, to be built with green and sustainable materials which comply or exceed Green Checklist Guidelines. Thousands of hours have been applied to the countless details of our project and we would appreciate your support to move our project forward to the next phase. Our design team and as, and exit strategists are present if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment for a minute and ask my, go ahead, got a question? Are there any clarifying questions from the planning commission? Okay, I'm going to open public comment back up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, if they haven't already completed a comment card, they can submit one later, but please come to the dais and speak. Not seeing anybody come forward. Do we have any, oh, we have one person. And if you're dialed in from home, you can also raise your hand through the application and Bridget will put you in the queue. Please.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. Juliette Kolda, just a couple of quick notes of support for the project. As a Realtor, and Sharan is here as well, we're, we've been working with the owners of this project and I just want to say I think it's going to be an asset for, just not our community, but for the, the community. The real estate agents are really excited about this because I think they did a great job, as Scott mentioned, not making this look like a model home cookie cutter development, but each home has a different sort of look and feel and I think they did a great job on that. Also, on behalf of Our Lady the Pillar, who is the adjacent land owner by about 50% on the south side there, my husband, who wasn't here tonight, he's home with the kids having a matigra party. So he wanted me to let you guys know that he talked to John Christian, who is the executive director of the real estate for the Archdiocese of San Francisco, and he is in support of this project. And also Father Jose, our pastor at Our Lady the Pillar, is also in support of the project as a neighbor. So just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Do you see anything online?
Not online, no.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Let's move it back to the planning commission. Questions or discussion items?
So I had a couple of questions. I, I don't, the, two really. The first is the variance that we're supposed to decide on. You never really talked about why we need that variance. Like, I see why you'd want the variance, right? You want to build a bigger house, but I don't see why it's necessary. Can you explain?
The primary reason is for continuity between the other houses, that to limit this Lot 10 to the 15-foot street-facing side setback would essentially force a much narrower house that's substantially different than the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. And the additional space between the, the street-side property line and the curb really gives the, a, just about 15 feet of space between the street and, and the, the house as designed anyway. And so visually, it would, it would be more compatible with the, the other houses. And there is justification for the, the variance findings given the, the creek and the, the riparian buffer, so.
Well, so, I mean, I've heard a lot about how this process has been going on for so long, so many thousands of hours of planning. I don't understand why it couldn't be planned that that house be smaller. Like, it's the one, the one, you know, structure that was, you know, outlined, I don't really understand why the fourplex also wasn't put up so people could see what, how big that would be. But the one that's there on Church Street, that borders Church Street is Lot 10, I guess, is huge. It's big. It's a big house. And so I don't, I don't really understand why that house can't be smaller. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, variances are okay, but only when they're needed. So that's, I didn't, I still don't quite understand why it's necessary other than it would be, it would make them fit with the design of the other houses.
Can I just tag on to that as, as you, as you think about it? There's an ADU attached to Number 10?
Yes.
Would the ADU exist if there was no variance?
It would be difficult to design the ADU and, you know, to have, have the, both the single-family and the ADU be compatible with the, the other houses massing-wise. And just to give a little context, the, the subdivision was, was appealed to the coastal commission. And the coastal commission determined that there was substantial issue and they, they ultimately approved the subdivision design. So part of this is that we were, you know, we had less say on, you know, where the lines ended up, so.
Let me just. Can I, can I, can I ask Scott to just put this, put the site plan up at least? It's a point of reference for. And just to clarify, the planning commission created this subdivision plan or approved this subdivision plan, Scott?
If I, if I could. If I, if I could, one of the, one of the issues with this project is it has such a wonderful, long history, that there were a lot of things going on and a lot of moving parts over, over the years. And I can only, I can speak to this because Mr. Jeffs came into the office, and I met Mr. Jeffs as a new community development director, and just as the Coastal Commission was informing him that he was, one, that they had approved and accepted his conditions of approval on the original map. But oh, by the way, the map has to be recorded in less than 30 days, was, was the notice that he was given. So we then had to pick up basically a brand-new map. But that being said, at the time of the, of that map, and I, you know, didn't really want to go here, but, but there, the facts remain the facts, that in the tentative map, there were building envelopes shown for each of these lots, and those building envelopes basically reflected what is being shown on the plans today. Now, those building envelopes, the setbacks, were not approved as part of any planned unit development, any condition, and they were not ultimately reflected as part of conditions of approval or on the final map. Unfortunately, though, I will say, those building envelopes have been around, they're in the files, they're there, and I, you know, the applicant only can speak to this issue, but I believe there was some reliance at, at one point or another by the applicant on what was seen in that materials and everything of that deal. We have subsequently gone through the analysis and determined that those building envelopes were not part of the recorded map and therefore are not applicable specifically to this. But I do think they are a factor, and they are a real factor to how we got to this point and how those, that home in particular was designed to that size and those considerations with that. So that's, that's one piece of the equation that I think is fair to, to, to put onto the table. I think it would be good to hear from the applicant. I don't, their, their, their notes were there, it's your choice, but I think it would be good to, to ask the applicant to justify a little more in terms of what their basis of, why they don't, and why did they did not pursue a, a smaller home on this. That being said, you know, we have a staff provided you some basis, obviously, for findings related to this. It's not going to be, in our estimation, precedent-setting in any way, shape, or form. This is an incredibly unique parcel within the CD zoning district, and it is very constrained. And I think the commission is ultimately just going to have to, to make the decision on, on, on whether they think that that is unique enough and reason enough to justify this variance or not, because obviously, you know, you, we can all see that you can make a narrower shotgun house and go with that, and that would be a change. I think perhaps you were going on another side of this issue, which is that the loss of an ADU is a loss of an opportunity and a potentially affordable opportunity for housing as well, if that in fact might occur, and that's a factor that may be of worthwhile conversation as well.
Thank you, John. Any other clarifying questions?
Yeah, I did.
You have the floor, so.
I did. So.
And we may come back to the applicant, but let's, let's finish the clarifying questions.
No, I am, so, the other question I had was, the, obviously, the riparian corridor is very close to this, and so I wanted to know what you're basing the, the buffer on. And, and so, are, are we, are we talking about 50 feet? Is that what we're talking about? From, are we talking about from the center of the creek? Are we talking about from the bank of the creek? What are we talking about? Can you explain? I don't understand.
Yeah, so it's, it's 50 feet from the high-water mark, the high-water line, so top of bank, so.
So from the bank?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, this seems a little unrelated, but when was the LCP finished, this local coastal plan? Did this?
I believe it was approved approximately four years ago.
Yeah.
And the document was drafted about eight years ago. I went through revisions for three years.
Well, I'm wondering if this approval four years ago was made before the local coastal plan came out, because the local coastal plan is a little, says something a little different than 50 feet from the bank.
Let's dig into that.
Okay.
So, so you're talking about Section 648?
Yeah, I am.
The final, let's, the, the tentative map was definitely approved before the LCLUP was, was adopted.
Okay.
And.
So it's a little tricky, because, you know, it's been given approval by the planning commission, but then we have the LCP where the rules are a little different.
Yes, but the, the final map, the final map still is the dictating piece. It's a recorded, there is a surveyed line there for this. It's part of the mitigation measures that were included with this. There, there, I, I understand the quandary there with it, but, but we don't see a conflict because the issue is that this was decided upon at that point by the map, and the map is the ultimate authority when it comes to the design of this project.
Okay. So the map, if I'm, if I'm understanding right, says there's a 50-foot setback from the bank, and that's the bank four years ago, not the bank now, right?
Correct.
That's what we're talking about? So, so the bank now, after those storms, I don't know where that is, but I assume it's a little bit closer. Has anybody looked into that?
So, on a weekly basis, we have a team of biologists out on the site that, you know, survey and evaluate the construction activity that's taking place there, per the mitigation measures that were adopted with, with the tentative map. So as John mentioned, it's, the final map is really the, the guide for, you know, where development can take place, so.
So just for the record, actually, it's, it's 649 that talks about 50 feet from riparian vegetation.
Yep.
Which I assume are willows, riparian vegetation? I don't know what's considered riparian vegetation.
There are multiple species in the creek. If you've been there, it's more than one.
That's, that's one indicator, but there are other species.
Right. So, anyway, that, I, I just think that's an important point, and I don't, I don't really see it being addressed in the staff report.
So, let me take this back to our attorney. We have, if I recall correctly, the original setback in the old LCP was 50 feet from the high, from the, from the outer limit of the, or the high bank, and we have a different standard now. What do we do in this situation where we've changed the standard midway through the project? Is it using the old map as approved, or do we need to look at the new LCP?
So the, it's based on the map as approved. So the, the layout of the lots and the, the area that's subject to the open space or conservation easement is delineated on the map, and so adjusting that area or making changes to the map now, that's not up for consideration at this point. That map is approved.
And, and now that we have new standards in place and we're approving a final CDP for the project, can we attach conditions of approval to the project that say, look, this applicant needs to maintain the current standard, which is, don't go into the area, don't do inappropriate pruning of vegetation? Can we attach those conditions of approval to a project like this?
Is, well, is part of the question about adjusting the line on the map?
I don't, I don't.
Or, or.
No, it's just making sure that we have a new standard. The new standard can apply, applies to this for, not for adjusting the lot line.
Mm-hmm.
And we can talk about Number 10 separately, but I'm just.
Certainly. Well, I, maybe we put to staff to see, to speak to the conditions of approval that are in the resolution, that are designed to, to take into account the protection, the types of protection.
But changing the lot line is off.
That's, that's the, that, the lot line and the area on the map that's delineated for protection, that, that is established. And so, changes to that are not before the commission tonight.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
So, just theoretically, if the, if the river, sort of, the creek changed course and was now in the lot, we would still allow them to build?
I believe the answer is we'd be obligated to. You have a legal parcel of record, you have, first of all, there was a flood study associated with this, so there was evaluation and looking at and defining exactly where, where the creek was. Obviously, that is was, you know, certainly, there have been, with any creek, river, there are, there are changes that occur over time with any bank. But my, my position to you would be, you can't go and change that position, you know, that the map created, that the defined, recorded buffer area. And frankly, the buffer was put in not only for biotic reasons, but also for the reason that you could have some adjustments in, obviously, the bank and location of the Pillar Cedos Creek and the mix of all of this over time. And those units were set back enough to, to stay out of that, out of that, that area. So I think it was, it was twofold for that, biotic and for riverine movement.
So just to be clear, the planning commission is issuing a final CDP, approving a final CDP on a project where our only decision is whether to grant the variance or not? And all other issues are set in stone? So we're not, we're not taking up any issues other than the variance. Is that right?
Design review, basically, architectural review, and then the variance.
But not LCP guidelines?
The units themselves are really the subject, the units themselves are the subject of tonight's meeting and what is being requested per action on, nothing can or really is afforded to the commission to renegotiate the terms of the final map and what was recorded at the county.
So, yeah, I don't really need to negotiate anything. I'm not, like, trying to get something different. But I would, I, I'm trying to get clarity on whether we're supposed to, as a planning commission, enforce LCP, or if we're supposed to just grant or not grant a variance? That's the question.
Well, I mean, we are enforcing the LCP because it's part of architectural review, part of the design guidelines, they all roll up into the LCP. So it's, it's, and if there are conditions of approval that we believe are necessary for this current project to be granted an LCP, then we can attach those to the project. I think city staff can clarify that. But, yeah, this all rolls into the LCP at the end of the day.
I, I understand, but if the, if the LCP has different guidelines than what the guidelines for this project are, then that's, I guess that's, we're not allowed to go over that.
I mean, if there was a material change in the project, if a river literally changed, yeah. I mean, we'd probably be talking about a different project here when we'd look at something different, but my takeaway from Mr. Dowdy's comments was there's been no material change to the project since the original CDP was issued and the map was created. Is that fair, Scott?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. I mean, it's, as I mentioned in the description, it's, the, the project includes the new houses, the, the vertical construction associated with the, the project, and the variance, so.
Commissioner Jonas?
Yes, aren't we also considering that whether we should accept the NECDAC? That's part of the, and, and I'm not sure how the NECDAC fits into this discussion because it talks about changes in the, I mean, we just talked about, there's a change in the creek and possibly since the last storms. The, we know that the storms are more frequent. We, I mean, in the report that you mentioned, mentioned, I, I don't know when it was last done, so I, I'd like to understand that. That goes to, you know, looking at it from the NECDAC. But I also want some clarity on whether or not, I thought this approval, the, the subdivision final map was amended recently, as of last year. Am I correct?
Scott, are you? Yes, there was an amendment to the final map that had to do with some, some technical changes, and what I'd like to do is call upon the, the project engineer to provide more information on the, the nature of the, the changes to the, the final map.
If I could.
And to my knowledge, it didn't have anything to do with the, the riparian buffer.
Okay, so, so the final map as it's recorded can be amended then, if, if that's what we're getting it back at?
The subdivision, let's, let's, if we can, there are provisions under the Subdivision Map Act that allow a recorded map to be modified. Those are related to survey errors, things of that nature, technical errors to the mapping itself, where there was maybe a wrong datum acknowledged on there. There was something to do with that, not to a substantial level of changing the nature, changing the lots and do with it. Those would require coming back and looking at it. There's various options there, but that would require coming back to the commission and council ultimately for a change to that. I, I can't speak to exactly what those are, and if, if you wish to hear from the, the project engineer, and they can tell you what the limits of that are, but what I can tell you is, is that, is that the Map Act has some very specific provisions in that state law. Again, what we're, I mean, and I hate to use the term because it's an easy used, an overly-used term and inappropriately at times used, but basically, you have a grandfathered situation here where you have a map, you have an agreement in place, you have provisions with this, and if I indicated that I thought that that, the creek had changed, then I did not mean that in any way. I don't know that it has, don't believe that it has significantly. I've been through there and down there, but the bottom line being is that at some point, I think this applicant has had to rely upon the fact that, that final map was in place, they had provisions, and frankly, single-family homes are generally not subject to the kind of, you know, discretion and, and authority that comes with, in, in the coastal zone in particular. But I don't, I, I don't, you know, reopening the entire initial study in NECDAC is not where I think I would ask or recommend you go, but that's, that's something that you can choose. What you're asked, being asked to do is find, the project is consistent with that. You're not asking to be recertifying it, you're just asking and determining that it is, the project's consistent, what was reviewed. I understand hesitations and reservations on that.
Well, how, how, when were the, when was the NECDAC issued? What year was it and what information was considered? What year was it and what information was considered?
So, the, the mitigated negative declaration was certified in October of 2017. The second time, because it expired once, so.
So, when does a, a NECDAC expire, how many years does it have, what is the life of it?
Well, was the, the permit expired? The answer, the answer is, there is no set expiration of an environmental document, it's, it's basically, it's as good as what you or any deciding body feels is adequately still addressing the issue, so there is no shelf life on those, obviously, there's reasonlessness and all of that, and if staff had felt and believed that there was substantial concern, substantial change in nature, we would have suggested doing something other than finding it consistent with that, we did not make that determination, we have had, again, the biologist out on the site regularly, we've received the field reports on those things, we've looked at it, dealt with it, the primary issue here, obviously, has been that issue, the Pillar Cedars Creek and the buffer and the setbacks and those, those issues, and that's been monitored and significantly evaluated far more than what the NECDAC, mitigated NECDAC ever did in its own deal, because that was a one-time review and look at the site and making a determination, what they're looking at is on a day-to-day basis, whether this project and whether the work being done there is impacting, or whether there's been significant changes that, that require, necessitate change, so, in a nutshell, we did not determine that there was significant change or provisions with that, ultimately, the commission can, can decide that it cannot and will not make that finding of consistency with it, it's within your right to do so.
Commissioner Johannes?
Well, then, I'm, I'm very confused because I don't know what it is that you looked at that made those findings, that the 2017 NECDAC still is applicable, because that wasn't explained very clearly to me, maybe it is to everyone else, but there are certain checkboxes, and I know there are certain things that you all look at, but I don't, I mean, what I, I'm hearing you say is that because there's a biologist out there making sure that things were done in accordance with the requirements for the CDP previously, the conclusion is from staff is that everything else on the, that should have been considered in the NECDAC is okay, so, I only heard about the biology part, I didn't hear about anything else, and maybe I'm completely misunderstanding something.
So, there, the check, the environment, if you, if you go, look through any environmental, the state environmental checklist, which is what the, is, starts all of these, it's on various issues, parking, traffic, all of those things. Basically, this project envisioned the number of units, the number of lots, and everything anticipated with this, and it, it knew that this was going to be a private street, it knew it'd be sewered, it knew it'd have water, we knew it'd have utilities, all of those are part of the, of the new, normal SEQA process, all of those things are either in or underway and there, so, the only, I think, from, from my perspective to say to you is, the only thing that I think I'm hearing and the only thing that I can really see is, is the question on this, is not that, that any of those things have changed and there's any change circumstanced of substantial, you know, deal with any of those issues because we knew how many lots we were going to have, we knew, you know, the unit count, we knew traffic, we knew all of those things were happening with us, we knew we were going to have, you know, affordable units in that fourplex, we knew there was going to be a fourplex, all of those things were known at the time when the SEQA document was certified and approved by the planning commission sitting at that point. What we have heard is, is primarily concerned about what's happening with this buffer, this is kind of the outstanding issue, it's a concern, and, you know, and I understand the uniqueness of this with regard to whether we're applying the old LCP or the new LCP, that's a piece to get through, but beyond that point, we basically landed on, on a, on a position that there's nothing with the project that was not contemplated, not known and not understood at the time of the creation of the map, the approval of the tenant map, and ultimately, recorded part of the map, that's where that, that came from, and yes, it was a few years ago, but still, we're looking at the same project, and we knew exactly that this project point would come forward, some applicant would come forward with the units themselves, in which you would then be asked to look at the architectural and the site plan and design of these.
Can I just ask some follow-ups on this, so, were the property owners adjoining this project notified of our hearing tonight?
Yes, absolutely, we, we sent notices to all property owners within 300 feet.
Did that include Caltrans?
Yes.
So, Caltrans had an opportunity to review this project?
Correct.
And does Caltrans have professional staff that are capable of evaluating whether or not a mitigated negative declaration is still applicable, or if there's been a material change put in place?
Absolutely.
Does city staff, as a course of business, have people who are technically qualified to determine whether or not an MND that was issued is still applicable, or if a material change has happened?
Absolutely, and legal staff as well, so.
Okay, and it's the city's opinion that no material changes happened that impacts the MND, and that the project with the mitigations that are attached as conditions of approval would satisfy the MND, and that's part of what you're talking about with the change, is that you've buffed up the conditions of approval so that this project conforms with the new LCP as best as possible, given what's been grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay, and have you received any question, I don't think, I think you've already heard this answer, you haven't had any questions or comments about the project so far, in terms of it's not a...
And no inquiry, not even any casual inquiries at city hall, or?
Okay, very good, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I understand everything, Commissioner Johannes, do you have any other follow-up clarifying questions on this?
Yeah, does the city need to, city staff need to look at any of the, what's considered cumulative impacts, because there's other projects that are planned to go in, how does it, those affect the viability of this project, for example, things upstream from Pillar Cedars Creek, there's a project that's going in on 880 Stone Pine, how is that drainage going to affect this property, we also have a Caltrans project that came before us, I, several months ago, about the scouring of the bridge right adjacent to this property, which is next to, I guess, that parcel where the swale is going to be, and I was just wondering where that swale and the drainage for that swale is going, is that going to the sewer district plant, or is that going into the creek, you know, because we still haven't heard back, or we still don't know whether the scouring project, Caltrans was supposed to do a study to make sure that upstream from where they were going to be doing the work had some changes, so I don't know where that project is, so, I'm just trying to relate in my head, all the things that have come before me, at least while I've been on planning commission, and how they're interrelated, because I'd hate for this project to be impacted by any flooding or any kind of, you know, loss of property, because we've seen that on a lot of ditches along the homes that have been approved by the planning commission in the past, that flooding has occurred, and now that they're in a situation with the city is being compromised, so, I'm, I'm only asking questions because this is before us, and I feel it's important for me to do my due diligence to make sure I understand everything about this project, including the flooding issues that we're concerned about, and it's happening across the city with many properties that have been, been affected, and so, it's, it's very difficult for me to say, okay, everything's fine, it's the same as 2017, and then you see, you know, lots losing their, their properties because of, you know, deteriorating soils around it, and it's just inching up towards a property, all of these lots, if you consider Pillar Cedars Creek to be unique, all of them should be unique, and if there's a variance for one, why isn't there a variance for all of them, you know, that's, this, this is a unique piece of property, we, we know this, right? So, why only does it affect one lot and not the rest, I, it's not clear to me.
Um, if you, could you clarify that last piece of why one lot and not the others? I, I don't understand.
It's just that way, why is, there's only a variance for one lot, I mean, couldn't the others say we want larger houses on other lots?
Well, they, you know, the applicant, as anyone could, could ask for, I suppose, to anything, you know, they're asking for a variance for this site and this lot only because of unique characteristics of that, the other parcels have adequate space, have, do not have, the part that I don't know that is clear is that this is the, I think it's been, the staff report was clear, this is the only parcel with two street-side setback issues with it, it's the only one, none of the others have, have a double frontage, and that's the primary issue that you're dealing with, you're, you're dealing with dual frontage setbacks, and very narrow, and very narrow lots that were created at the time.
I think there were a couple of other issues that Commissioner Johannes brought up, and it might be helpful to separate them, one is the concept of a foreseeable project under SEQA, there's a technical term for this, and I might ask city staff or our city attorney to address the issue of, because there are other projects on other properties that we know are happening, do we need to, is there some guidance under SEQA about how we're supposed to think about this project and that project, are they somehow interrelated?
So, to address that question, because there is an, so, cumulative impacts, I think, would have been considered at the time that the environmental document, the, the MND, was drafted and approved, and because that document is still in place and applies to this phase of the project as well, there wouldn't have been a new cumulative impacts analysis as, you know, as, as part of this phase of the project.
A subsequent project that had to go through an MND would have to think about the fact that there was a project, this, this project was existing, a new project would have to take this one into consideration.
So, you're saying if there is a separate project approved...
The bridge scouring, or...
That's undergoing environmental review?
Right.
It, it depends on the environmental document that's being proposed, you know, some projects are...
The cumulative impact falls on the subsequent projects?
Yeah.
Is the point?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was, there was a question related to stormwater and lot drainage onsite, sort of, is one of the considerations, and there is a condition of approval, I believe, in, in the resolution that speaks to that issue of lot drainage and, and onsite detention, that I think staff could, could speak to, it's, and, and stormwater management as well, so.
Yes, so, so the whole subdivision has been designed as a whole, as far as containing stormwater, and what I would suggest, Mr. Chair, is maybe requesting additional feedback from the engineering geologist that's present this evening, from the design team to provide, you know, some more feedback on the stormwater design for each of the individual lots and how, how they all work together for, in, in concert with the detention basin, so...
I think that's a terrific idea, but let's finish our clarifying questions to city staff, and then we'll bring the applicant back. Commissioner Johannes?
I'll wait.
Okay. Vice Chair Gossett?
Thank you, I would like to talk about a different topic, I, thank you, Scott, for sending that memorandum this morning with the arborist's report from 2017, I have a question for the attorney, I want to know, there were conditions of approval issued when the city approved the subdivision in 2017, what happens if the conditions of approval are not being followed? From that time, time period?
So, is, so you're saying if the city determines that the applicant, that there's conditions in place and the applicant has not been...
Correct.
Complying?
I could be specific, but I just want to know in general, and I, I will talk about the specific.
Yeah, I think this may be a question for staff in terms of city procedures, but I, I, my understanding is that the city would notify the, the applicant of a violation of conditions of approval.
Okay, I mean, I could become, Scott, I sent you an email yesterday and you didn't answer my question, when I asked if the conditions of approvals cited in 2017 were being followed for the tree protection plan, and, so, that's probably the question, on page 389 of our staff report, it indicated the, the condition of approval required that the cypress trees be protected out to the drip line, and that was, I could probably, if we, I pull up that page, I could become very specific about that, but, I, so I wanted to know how that condition of approval was reflected in what was going on the site today.
Yes, and I, I, I think I did attempt to answer your questions, and I apologize if I didn't...
I didn't get the answer on how the condition of approval was being reflected in the current conditions today, the drip line extends 35 to 50 feet from the root of the tree.
Yes, correct, and, and there are improvements that were approved within the drip line of the trees, and the arborist's report, the arborist provided recommendations to reduce or eliminate any impacts to the trees, if tree protection was to be pursued, and part of that was the installation of interlocking pavers for road, for the road surface, as well as limiting the amount of grading to a certain depth, now, it's, it's true that, you know, the, the conditions weren't followed perfectly, you know, because there was a little more grading that took place, and once that was discovered, we had an arborist go out and evaluate the trees to see how, see if any damage had been done, and, you know, the letter from a, the licensed arborist was transmitted this afternoon with the feedback on what he, you know, concluded, and he didn't find that the trees were damaged by the grading that took place, so I think it's, you know, part of this is, you know, was there any impact created beyond whether or not the conditions were complied with perfectly, and the answer is no, that we don't, we didn't, the arborist did not discover any, you know, substantial damage to the trees, now, he did mention that any future work within the drip line of the trees, that, you know, a licensed arborist should be on site, you know, to maintain the trees, so that's, that is one thing the commission may want to consider as far as adding an, you know, an additional condition of approval, so...
I definitely want to talk more about the trees, and maybe I'll save it for deliberation, because maybe that's the most appropriate time, I guess, that, I just am not understanding that answer, because it, it doesn't seem as though the trees are being protected beyond the condition of approval, the arborist had very specific recommendations in terms of fencing and such that are not being followed, and there are other items that he had suggested in terms of his recommendations in that report, so, but that's, I, I can leave the other comments that I have for deliberation, in terms of the safety of the trees and the law... in terms of the safety of the trees and the long-term health of the diseased trees. And the other thing I noticed beyond just the cutting into the root system on the north side is that there were, uh, large limbs hanging out on the ground at the site, and there were very large limbs that are hanging. So, um, I, I just want to bring up a safety issue for the, uh, the diseased trees that present a danger for, um, everyone around the site. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions?
I don't think I have any more questions. You guys covered a lot of questions.
I have a few, so I'll start, and then you might have some, so let me, let me jump in here. Is the intention that the private street is going to be gated and public access is going to be blocked?
No, no, so the, there is a condition of approval from the 2017 resolution that prohibits any gating.
Great, thank you. When I look at the landscape plan, I interpret it to understand that there is a fence on the back of the properties that separates the area where the applicant, the homeowners are allowed to live from the riparian area. Is that fair?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Do we have a, uh, standard for replacement of a heritage tree? Or, in this case, a mature Monterey Cypress tree if it's damaged in construction?
So we, we typically give the applicant some flexibility. Uh, of course, we'd want a species that's compatible with the rest of the landscaping that's going in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but no eucalyptus, so.
But, but in the case of like-
Or other invasives.
For this particular project, we don't currently have a replacement standard of three to one, five to one for a tree that's a mature tree that's damaged?
N- no, one to one.
But in the past, we've applied that standard to other projects?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to hear this, the geologist for the applicant or for the city address the issues of flooding that Commissioner Joanna raised. Um, we've heard a great deal about projects that, um, have been approved where, where flooding has subsequently become an issue. So if the applicant's prepared to talk about this, I'd love to hear a technical expert give their perspective on it. Please. And please make sure the mic's on.
Well, is there light? Oh, it's on. Um, I'm, this is, I'm Charlie Kissick with Sigma Prime Geosciences. I've been working on this project since 2012, I believe. And, um, quite a few years ago, a flood analysis was done, not by me, because I'm not a hydrologist, but I overs, I, I reviewed it and saw how it was done. And, um, the city at the time wanted the high water, the hundred-year flood level, well, not just a hundred-year flood level, they wanted to know what, what will the water level be during the peak of a hundred-year storm at the exact same time as the peak of a flood caused by, um, the failure of Pillar Cetus Dam, plus a su-, uh, the ma-, the maximum tsunami. All three converging at the exact same time. And the odds of that are probably one in several million of happening.
Please don't say that.
You know, but, well, the hundred-year storm and a, and a earth-
I understand.
Yeah. And the flood level was still way below where the houses are, several feet. I don't have the numbers in front of me, because I haven't really thought about it for many years now, but I know it was, I'm not even, well, and then last year I went out there during that, the worst storm we had. Was that this year or last year? Where it was, uh-
January 2020.
Really, the real, yeah, I think it was January 30th or December 31st? Right. I think we got nine inches of rain that day. And I saw where the, uh, Pillar Cetus Creek was, I'd never seen it so high. So I went over to Creekside Court, and it was still down in the willows. The water hadn't even gotten past beyond the willows. And that's many, many feet below the level of the house. And if you add those other two factors, and if it really is a hundred-year storm, I don't know if last year's was or not, there's just no way those houses will flood from, from any, I mean, that, that one scenario, this very low probability was still well below. I don't, I don't remember, five, eight, ten feet lower than where the houses are, so.
We've had some, and this is probably an unfair question, um, but I'll ask it anyway, because, uh, I've participated in several public meetings recently where, um, applicants upstream along Pillar Cetus Creek have observed, um, erosion of their properties. I don't know if you've paid attention to any of that activity upstream or, or if you're aware of it, but, uh, I, I do have an opinion on activities that, you know, have happened in the last year and a half and, and the damage upstream and the change of the water course. Is it, in your opinion, does it have a material impact on this project?
No, not really. Up, I've looked at a lot of properties upstream, some bridges that washed out, and some bridges that were in danger of washing out. When you go upstream, the, the creek banks are often maybe ten feet tall and nearly vertical, and in, the creek is very much in size. But at Creekside Court, you go down to the bottom of a gentle slope behind the houses, you hit the willow trees, and I've walked through the willows to get to the creek, and it's another at least fifty feet, maybe more, before you get to the actual creek. And when the water is at a high level, there's, there's no actual creek bank. There's no vertical demarcation. It's just very diffused through there, through a very thick jungle of willows with the, with horizontal trunks, and it's just a, a, a complete jumble in there. And, um, I didn't go in there in the last year, but I would be surprised if there was any substantial change in, in the river course. Or if there was, it would still be nowhere near the house, the house locations, and, and still well within the willows. So you'd have to walk through there, and, and, and I haven't done it for a few years, but I'd probably, if I went in there tomorrow, I'd probably, I don't know if I'd notice any difference or not. But if I did, it would still be, the, the edge of water would probably still be fairly close to where it was many years ago. Because like I said, there's no, over, like John was saying, over time, creeks meander, they change their course. But we're talking a geologic timescale in most cases. And, and in this situation here, because the houses are well above the floodplain, the meandering creek will be confined into that floodplain and not really getting anywhere, not even within fifty feet of those houses over quite a long period of time.
The lot to the north of the property is substantially below where your lot, the developments being proposed.
Which lot? To the north across the other side of the creek, you mean?
Yes.
The one that flooded badly last? Oh, that's much lower, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
I, I did, I, I've looked at that property for clients over the years, and I've always told them, uh, that's, that's not a good property to buy, because it's, I've seen it flood more than a few times. Last year was by far the worst. I was kind of shocked by how, by how high it was, but that's why I went over to Creekside Court. I says, oh, it's all good here, it's nowhere near, it's still in the willows.
Do you have any other clarifying questions? For the geologist?
Not for the geologist, thank you.
Um, I'd love to, if the applicant's willing, thank you, I appreciate it.
I have one minor question.
For him?
Oh, not for him.
Uh, I'll, I was gonna ask the applicant, um, to address the issue that was raised by Commissioner, um, my commissioner here, who is asking the opinion about the variance on number 10. And so, uh, I think it's helped, it's, it's a good conversation. Um, and I guess I would just phrase it as, would you build the ADU if you don't have a variance? Or would you just look at doing a different house altogether? Um, I think, yeah, if the applicant could answer that question. And, and there may be a secondary question that we'll ask after that.
So we did, um, originally, we did follow the original plan that showed the, um, the approved building envelopes, and that's why we designed that house. Uh, later, we found out it, regarding the corner lot and the setbacks, and there's absolutely no way that we'd be able to, um, design a house. It would be literally thirty feet wide. Um, the entrance would be twenty, ten feet wide after the two-car garage. So there was no way to, we'd be able to put, uh, an attached ADU there, much less detached.
And would you even be able, I mean, you've already had a Measure D approved with the ADU for that particular property?
Correct.
And would you be able to put an ADU on another property within the development area?
No, we, we did research maximizing ADUs. The other homes just, they, they cannot allow it. The design factors were just too restrictive.
Commissioner Goren, do you have any other clarifying questions on this particular point?
No, I asked.
Okay.
One minor question. I don't know if it's Scott or the developer. Uh, who will maintain the road in the future?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Who will maintain the road in the future?
Uh, there will be an HOA.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask, as far as the amendment to the subdivision in 2023 that was done-
To the map?
Yeah.
Uh, those, that was regarding CCWD, um, the water main, and it, it was all to do with utilities and utility easements and access and placements.
Thank you.
Please.
If a tree falls in the future, will the HOA pay for the removal?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have another question, sorry.
That's okay, no, this is why we're here.
So each of the lots has, um, their lots go into the creek. The property line goes right into the creek. Who, who maintains jurisdiction over managing or maintaining the, that creek at this point? And would the prop, each property owner have, um, the responsibility to maintain their property right into the creek? Because it goes up, all the way up to the center line of the creek, correct?
So the riparian, from my understanding, the riparian border restricts the access to there. So it basically, I, I'm assuming it, 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 um, it stays kind of like a wetlands? Is that right, Scott?
Yeah, so there's a conservation easement, so.
Let me, who, who has obligation or responsibility for doing any maintenance in that area? If the applicant wanted to do it, would they have to get a CDP to do the work?
Yeah, so I think it would, it would fall onto the HOA. And, yeah, it's for, for example, ma-, you know, vegetation removal would require a CDP, sim-, you know, similar to what, uh, are, the applicant is requesting for the new houses, so.
But that also is a, um, a limit, that we can't really touch the vegetation back there.
Well, you can if the CDP says you can, but there's just rule, you have to get a, you, so I think there's some clarification that could be provided by the city about how this can be maintained. We've had some problems in the past where other, other applicants have had a project approved, and they did inappropriate maintenance on the riparian area. And as a result, one would argue, their projects flooded. And so, and, and they had some other issues. Um, that's an argument, I'm not taking it in a position. But, so I think it's important that the city and the applicant have very clear policies on what can be done there and how, because if I had a bunch of weird stuff growing behind my house, some of which is invasive species, or I had people putting garbage in my, the back of my house, I would want to address it. So I think it's important, given some of the history that's happened along that area, that the city work with you to establish that. But it sounds like that, there's some lack of clarity there, is what I'm taking away.
But there are guidelines in place on that restriction. Uh, even on our landscape plans, we did have to, uh, apply and, and, and recommend plants or species that were, um, that would not contradict with the existing vegetation there.
But you're not doing any, um, you're not doing a landscape plan in the riparian area, you're just doing it within the project, right?
Correct.
And so I, I think that it's important as a property owner that the city provide absolute clarity on what you can and can't do, and that each of your homeowners understand what they can and can't do, because nobody wants to come here and talk to us about what went wrong.
Those have actually been tabled with the attorney formatting our CCNRs right now.
Great, excellent. Absolutely.
I was curious about the, um, the, the road. Does that open up onto Highway One?
No.
Okay. Where does that, where does it open up? So you make the turn into the parking lot and then cut in?
So the, there is a hammerhead. Like, it's only an emergency vehicle hammerhead, uh, right in front of Lot Two. Uh, and that is for just an emergency vehicle to turn around. Uh, other than that, vehicular access only goes to Lot One and-
Okay, so from, so from, the only access is church?
Yes.
There's no access through one? Okay, good, thank you.
I, I thought there was an access, uh, uh, right by the police station. There's, there's supposed to be some kind of pushout there.
It, it's an emergency access.
So that's, is that by Lot Two? Okay. Okay, great, thanks.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused, so, right, I'm looking at Lot Two, and I see this cutout. That's the emergency access that you're talking about? So it would otherwise be gated, that particular area?
Ballards?
Or is it open?
Uh, no, it's open.
So it's open, and it opens into the parking lot?
I believe, the, I, I-
Mr. Chair, if I, if I, I can provide some clarification. There, there are removable ballards that would be installed, and they, they could only be removed during emergency access, you know, for, you know, emergency, you know, uh, for fire crews or the sheriff's office to get, to use that. It, on a normal basis, it would be closed off. So it's essentially a, sort of a dead-end street.
Thank you, Scott. Any other clarifying questions? Thank you so much. I think we're gonna return it to the planning commission for discussion, and we'll let you know. And I'm gonna close public comment.
Thank you.
Who would like to start? Okay, I'll jump in. This is a tricky lot. It's also a spectacular site, and I applaud the work that's gone into the design. It's thoughtful, and I find it's in conformance with the residential design guidelines. I do appreciate that, um, a lot of thought and feedback has been taken from the AAC. So I, I think it's, I like the variance. Two things, if I'll put my design hat on, stand out to me. The first project we looked at, the all-white project, could use a little more texture. Uh, when I compared it to the other properties, they have texture, they look good, they conform with this design guidelines. And, um, we often have these decorative balconies that people think are lovely flourish, but they're not very useful. And, and from what I've interpreted, and this particular project has one of these Romeo and Juliet balconies, I think they're called. I would be supportive of subsequently, if you guys wanted to expand these or push them out a little bit, to make them more usable space, because I have one of these terrible balconies on my property, and it's my biggest regret, is that we didn't push it out. And so, um, other applicants have done that, and I think they now have substantially more enjoyable space, especially because, yeah, you're looking at a parking lot, but you're looking at a Cypress Grove from this particular balcony, and it's a spectacular view. And some of the other balconies on the other side have really lovely views. And I think it's, it would be a shame to miss that opportunity. It would substantially improve the quality of your home. I'm really annoyed, uh, that the applicant didn't follow the design guidelines for protecting the trees. And I do, in the past, we've attached conditions of approval at a three to one or five to one- And I do, in the past, we've attached conditions of approval at a three-to-one or five-to-one ratio for trees that are damaged or removed in the course of a project. And so that's something that I would like to look at us doing here for this particular project, is it, look, it's a spectacular grove, it's something you can see from Highway One, which is a visual corridor. I would hate to see anything bad happen there and a five-to-one replacement ratio would provide appropriate motivation to the applicant to maintain the trees and keep them healthy. And it puts the obligation on the applicant. And we've, we've got some standards that we've come up with the past about certain-sized box trees would need to be put in there to replace it. So I'd love to look at something like that. I, I do want to make sure that, I've looked at the conditions of approval and I think that, that's the, it's the current language that we use for conditions of approval for protecting riparian corridors. I just want to make sure that the applicant works closely with the city when they're drafting their CCRs, that they, everybody's really clear on what they can and can't do in that area. I think it's really important. We've had almost no new development in the city for affordable housing. This was one of the first projects that came to this, to, to me when I was on the planning commission, that included any kind of affordable housing. It's nice to finally see this come before us. And I'm supportive of a Measure D on that lot. If somebody's working in good faith with the city, it's an oversight, that it would require a variance later on, I'll take that at face value, especially because an ADU is being built. And we have a housing crisis, it's another issue we're dealing with. ADUs are a way to address that. If, if we want to talk about what to do for Lot Ten, attach a condition of approval, I'm open to that, but I'm perfectly comfortable with the variance on it.
If you want to look at Lot Ten, you want to put that up on the screen, because we have Lot One on the screen? That's not it. That's not it.
That's Lot Ten.
I know, but there's a picture of a house.
I took just that one.
No, there's a house. The house, there it is. So I haven't really seen the need for, need explained to me for a variance. And I don't see, outside of Chair Hernandez bringing up a loss of an ADU if you, if you enforce the variance, I haven't heard any reason to not enforce the variance. That, to me, does not look like affordable housing. I understand ADUs can be, can be affordable housing, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. I think the fourplex is affordable housing. But what I see there is a huge house. And I think that, it's a huge house that doesn't meet city standards. So if I had a, a better explanation of why a variance is necessary for that spot, I would be happy to listen to that. But I just personally don't see it.
Do you have any other feedback on the other aspects of the project?
Well, I mean, if legal is telling me that we have to follow the old rules of the LCP, the old LCP, and not the new one, then that's, I think then we have to go with that, because that's the legal recommendation, right? So I'm still a little uncomfortable not following the LCP, but, but I get that that's, that you can't change the rules in the middle of a, an approval, right? Is that what you're telling me? Just to be clear.
I think there's already been an approval.
There's already been an approval of this map. And it is, this gets to one of your questions. It is specified either in the staff report or in one of the findings that the setback is fifty feet from the edge of the riparian vegetation as it was mapped in 2017.
Well, no, it was, it was fifty feet from High Point, from bank. It was not fifty feet from riparian vegetation. No, because that's what's new in the LCP, is fifty feet from riparian vegetation.
I think the point is, the language regarding this original CDP, the map is in conformance with the original language. And there isn't, I don't think there's an issue around that.
Right, that's what you're saying.
It's, it's, the LCP standard has changed.
I just want to, yeah, so, like, personally, I'm not that comfortable with it, but I also don't want to, like, you know, that would kill the project to say, well, you have to be fifty feet from riparian vegetation, because that's right next to it. So, just, like, that's in the LCP, and so I'm a little, eh. Just want to make sure we're legally covered here and that's what legal says.
Well, so what, what I'm looking at here is that, and the project planner could speak to the details of, of this more, but I'm looking at the resolution on page, so this is Attachment One. And I'm not sure what page this is, but it's looking at compliance with Coastal Act Section 30240B and LUP policy. It says six dash twelve, which is that development shall be sited and designed to avoid impacts to terrestrial ESHA wetlands and watercourses. And it notes that the proposed project includes a deed restricted open space easement for conservation purposes to protect this ESHA, including a fifty-foot buffer from the edge of riparian vegetation.
So not, not high bank, then? That's not what we're talking about.
And, and it says that the 2017 study established the buffer is recorded.
Well, that would make me a lot more comfortable.
No.
Than what I heard.
I'll give Scott a chance to look at that. And while he's doing so, give anything else, Commissioner Goren? Commissioner Juarez?
I tend to agree with all of the information, actually, actually some of the information, the concerns that Commissioner Goren has brought up. I'm uncomfortable as well with the granting of the variance. It is a buildable lot, so it can be built on, it's just the choices to build this size of a house. And so I'm thinking that, I don't know if I can support a variance, knowing that there's other things that can be done. The other point that I'm uncomfortable about is that with regard to the determin, you know, determination of the requirements according to a study in a mitigative, mitigative negative deck that was done in 2017, that gives me a little bit of concern, because it's all based on information that doesn't really apply to today, today. I mean, there's some information, but I'm very uncomfortable at doing that, because I've seen things that have happened since 2017 in this, you know, in ours town, and they were detrimental to many people. So I'm, I'm really reluctant to put my full support about it, but I really like this project. This project is great, it provides housing, whether or not it's affordable housing for all the lots, I, in ADUs, I, I don't know if that's the case, but perhaps for the, the fourplex, yes. But, you know, I, I'm having a difficult time trying to wrap my head around the mitigated, mitigated negative deck in this one lot, because it does have the two frontages. And the frontage that we're looking at, that wanting to get that setback variance, is the side yard. It's not the frontage of the, of the property. The front, the front of the property is on Creekside Road, I think. So the, it's, it's the side yard.
Well, the M and D applies to the whole project.
But, so I'm talking about two different things, the two things that they're asking us to.
So there's a variance in you, but, so I want to, I don't want to conflate what we're doing.
Right, so I'm talking about two things, right? I'm talking about the variance and that together, so.
Yeah, so I think those are great points, and I'd like to have us continue discussion on both of them. I'm curious what Commissioner Gossett's perspective is.
Overall, I really like the project. I think the construction is beautiful, the architectural design. I also like that the driveways are pervious material, given that we know there have, has been flooding in various areas, I think that will help, to help mitigate some of that. I respectfully disagree with a fellow commissioner who stated that the Cypress trees are healthy, based on the arborist report from 2016. He noted, and I'll just briefly go through quickly some of the things that he said. He said that Monterey Cypress has a poor relative tolerance to construction pressure and is intolerant of disturbance. Even if best management practices were implemented, development to the north of the trees may have a significant to severe negative effect on the tree's northward root system. He also cited pruning issues that has occurred in the past that has caused decay within the trees, that would reduce the structural stability of the main stems. And he spoke about the roots versus parking lot. The parking lot to the south impacts the root system, and he talked briefly about that. And then he spoke of the roots versus the proposed road. And in his report, he said he talked to the developer about having a raised road system to protect the roots, but even with that, he wasn't sure that that would protect, protect the trees in the future. He was also citing that the trees are diseased, they have Cypress canker, and his overall rating of the tree's condition was considered poor. And even if you followed the recommendations of his tree protection plan, the conditions of the trees wouldn't change. And the fact that the trees are diseased and, and damaged from prior activities, I'm, I'm very concerned about the safety of the site in general for both the north side and the south side. So I wanted to bring that up. I don't know how you, the fellow commissioners, think about that. I don't know if you read the arborist report, but when I read that, I was very concerned about the site. And the below-market-rate housing is positioned right in front of the trees. And, and the arborists indicated that anything within seventy-five feet could be damaged, whether it was a car, pedestrians, structures. So I'm not comfortable with the safety of the site with those trees in, in the current condition. And he, the arborists indicated that there's not really any way to improve the condition of those trees. And I, I understand that they do provide a beautiful visual screening, but I'm very concerned about the safety on the site.
Doesn't safety get talked about in the environmental documents as well? Whatever environmental assessment the staff needs to do, safety is part of that, right?
Yeah, safety's an issue. I mean, we have, I have five Monterey Cypress, I unfortunately inherited five, four Monterey Cypress trees, and I had to plant one on my property when I built in Half Moon Bay. So I'm very familiar with these trees and the things that happen with them. I think there's an existing condition, which is a tree that's not in great shape. Most of them aren't in amazing shape, they do look beautiful. But I don't believe, and I'd love to get city staff's perspective on this, that we have an obligation to mitigate the trees. If it was a tree that was falling over or clearly about to land on somebody's property, the city often takes emergency measures to take out those trees, but I, I don't, I don't see an imminent danger. And regardless, the liability would fall on the property owner, not the city in this situation. Is it, is it a material, do you have an opinion, are these a material risk to life and limb? Sorry for the pun.
I'd be happy to provide some clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the moment the arborist report was brought to our attention, we mobilized and reached out to the property owner, applicant, to, you know.
Which arborist report, the one today or the original?
The 2016 one.
Okay.
You know, the concerns about, you know, the recommendations within it. And we had a licensed arborist review the trees this afternoon, just to see if, you know, if there is a, you know, an imminent danger that needed to be taken care of. And the licensed arborist concluded that there wasn't any major damage done to the trees. Granted, there was deeper cuts that took place compared to what was recommended by the previous arborist, but, you know, we did have a substantial wind episode a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, the trees are, are still standing, so. If this went the other direction, that, you know, the trees are in, you know, danger of falling, then absolutely we would, we could issue a, after the factory removal permit, if need be, to abate the danger, and we would certainly do that in the future, too.
Thank you, Scott. The trees are standing today, but the root system on the south side have asphalt covering them. Now we're going to pave over the north side of the root system. And the arborist from 2016 indicated that the root system could extend fifty to a hundred feet. So construction itself is going to disturb the root system, and we're going to be paving over it. So how, how do you maintain the health of poorly rated trees that are diseased with construction activities and paving over the root system on both sides? And the other thing that he noted that I didn't mention is that there's a grade differential on the root system, which also renders them unstable. So I'm really uncomfortable about moving to protect these trees in any way when the arborist from 2016, his number one recommendation was removal. And then the tree protection plan he recommended has not even been implemented. So are, are you telling me that his 2016 report is invalid?
No, I did not say that. I, you know, a couple of things, they, he did recommend interlocking pervious pavers to be installed, and he actually provided this diagram within the arborist's report that shows where the interlocking pavers could be installed. And the subdivision improvement plans do actually show the interlocking paver. So I, I think, sure, sure that not all the recommendations were implemented to a T, but most were. And, Mr. Chair, if, maybe one thing, I think we do have at least one of the arborists log in, logged in this evening. We could, you know, ask for feedback from them if, if you think that, that would be helpful.
I would, no, I'll also point to the second arborist comments that are attached in the document we received here. It does say that trees are in fair condition, so that is something that we've received. In the past, I, I, I agree with your point about the trees, though. I'm not saying we need to replace a mature Monterey Cypress tree with more Monterey Cypress trees. There are appropriate trees for that area. And in the past... And in the past, Monterey, it's a liability to add these trees to your property. Just, just to be clear, and I know that. But there is a replacement ratio of mature heritage tree. And so I would not advocate mowing down these trees in their current state. Some of them should be, potentially be removed if an arborist thinks that's the case. Would love to get their opinion. But what we've done in the past with these types of projects is we've said, look, if you're going to take out a mature tree, we want to have a replacement ratio of three to one, five to one, whatever the number is. If it was one magnificent tree, it might be five to one. If it was several trees that are in a fair state, it might be three to one. But that would be what I would recommend, would be to have something in place where if these trees are damaged, that we have a replacement ratio. That's what we've typically done in the past. Trees die. I can't do anything about that. It makes me sad, but I can't do anything about that.
Yes, I, I agree, trees die, but I'm worried about the safety issue for everyone around the site in the future. And are we supposed to ignore that while we are issuing a CDP?
I mean, it's not a new, I think, I think city staff would like to address that issue.
Well, I don't. It's an interesting conversation tonight, and I, and it's, and I don't take it lightly. No one does. I, I think if you go to the Wayback Machine here and you talk about the original, the last subdivision approval with this, I think the, the then subdivider was in a box, because everybody wanted to see these trees retained, preserved, and they had a visual aesthetic attached to them, and I think they still do. Absent those clearly being shown as, as dangerous and needing to be removed, I think that staff would be in an awkward position. I think you would be in a very awkward position, actually advocating for those to all be removed tonight, which is what I'm hearing from Commissioner Gossett to say to be, to be preserved and be protected with that.
I mean, I think there's a question that's been raised. There's a technical expert who is willing to provide testimony as to the condition of the trees. I think if that person can join us through the Zoom.
Sure.
I think the appropriate thing is to get their testimony. I'm a layperson, I don't know if the tree, I know that these trees drop limbs. Every tree does. I've had them land on my house and land on my property. I know it happens, but.
I guess I would like to know if diseased trees are considered safe in an area, especially since technically they haven't been pruned in a way to protect them for the future. So, and it's cited in the report, and I don't want to go into great detail, but the fact of the matter is they have been mismanaged in the past that impact the stability of them today.
Scott, you mentioned that some action was taken in 2000, post 2016, 2017. Was a tree maintenance plan put in place with the owner or anything like that? And can we get the arborist to talk about what's going on here?
I don't think we have him on here.
Can, but that's the question I asked Scott that wasn't answered. In my, my memo to him on Sunday, I asked if the condition of approval from 2017 was reflected in the current state. And if you read the condition of approval, and it's on page 389 of our staff report, it said that the trees needed to be protected out to the drip line, and that's not happening. A drip line goes out anywhere from 35 to 50 feet. So it's not being protected. We have a road that was graded below the grade as recommended by the arborist. And I know they wanted to protect the trees. I love trees, but I don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable protecting unsafe trees that may be impacted in the future by what is going to go on in the next two years with construction.
May I clarify just one, one thing? The road location, as far as I'm aware of, never modified from what was approved into today. Correct, Scott?
Correct, yes.
The alignment remains the same, the location remains the same. Those drip lines were never going to be protected 35 to 50 feet out there, and that was never part of what the planning commission approved.
But it's in the condition of approval.
I, I understand that, but I'm trying to bring a reality check to the, what was approved and what was knowingly approved and what the arborist may have recommended. I understand that, and tonight you may modify to some extent how you wish to approach the trees. You could require a tree maintenance plan to be submitted. You could require a full detailed arborist report on these. We could certainly deal with all of those things that come around. I don't think those are off the table, but I just want to be clear that I understand what was done, what was said, and what was in the report. But that report was never reality, given this design and what it should have been reviewed against, because you were never going to have a 35 to 50-foot protection of that. You've got a parking lot, as you indicated, on one side, and you have a, a street, a private street that aligns the other side of this issue. You know, there were protection measures recommended as well with the pervious pavers and some of those things to deal with that.
And, and thank you, John, for, for saying what you have just said, because that, to me, in my mind, solidifies the fact that these trees that were rated poor in 2016, and the author of that report also did say that typically trees don't go from poor to better, especially based on the fact that they have, they're diseased, they've been pruned in a way that degrades, has caused rot in some of the trees. I, I just don't see how they're going to be safe for the future. I'm worried about residents on both sides.
So I guess the question here is, do we have an obligation to take action on a tree or trees? I've never, and we've had certified arborists and landscapers on the planning commission before. Actually, one was on, I think one might have been on the planning commission when we approved the project, and that would be Tom Conroy. This is out, historically has never been something we've looked at. It may not be that we shouldn't look at it, but this is, like, a tree being unsafe is a liability for the owner of the property. If we want to attach a condition of approval around these trees, it's, it's our purview to do so. I would not feel comfortable attaching a condition of approval around, like, cutting the trees down, for example, without an arborist or somebody or the applicant coming in and taking a clear position on it. My view is, if you have a, if you have a tree, as a heritage tree, it qualifies, and I don't think Monterey Cypress actually qualify, but in this situation, we could just simply attach a replacement value. That's what we've done. I don't, the city has an obligation to protect our safety. And nobody from the city is saying, yeah, this tree is going to fall over and be a mortal danger to anyone. I don't, I don't think anyone's saying that. Trees do fall, and they do present a potential mortal danger to anyone, but it's not something that's an imminent threat. And I don't, I see, I mean, literally, in the staff report we received today, it says, "These trees appear to be in fair health, although there are several broken branches." "I conducted a thorough inspection of the root zones at the time to determine if any structural lateral roots were exposed or at risk of damage. Based on my visual inspection of the designated area and the plans provided, did not observe any significant roots that could be damaged or any evidence of root damage resulting from the excavation." I mean, look, a professional arborist just looked at this site, and he gave no evidence that there's a mortal threat. I, I think it's outside of the bounds.
But I don't understand how, we have two conflicting reports. We have a report from 2016 that says something different.
So through the chair, if I could.
Please.
So the report that we got today was really a report based on checking the root system to make sure it wasn't harmed in the grading. And that's what the, the report is about, is about, you know, these, these trees seem to be okay, and I checked the root system, and the grading didn't create significant damage. I don't think that Vice Chair Gossett is actually bringing up something and saying, cut all the trees down because it's not safe. She's bringing up an issue that the city should be dealing with and the property owner should be concerned about, because if the, if they continue to violate the, you know, the, the conditions of approval, and the grading, the building of the road, the, the construction will kill these trees. And, and so that's something the city should be concerned about. I don't think there's, there's really a solution. That's why we can kind of back and forth, it's not an easy thing to fix. But I, but I think that's the issue that was raised, and I think it's, I think the city should take it really seriously. I don't know what we can do about it.
I'm just wondering, somebody was out there from the city while the subdivision was getting, putting all, in all their improvements, right? I mean, so, I mean, was this noticed before, or was this just something that was identified today?
Can I answer? I noticed this when I walked the site this weekend. I, I noticed that the roots had been cut into. And my understanding of protecting trees prior to even reading the arborist's report is that you protect trees out to the tree canopy.
So, so what's the city's obligation while their subdivision is being improved? Was there somebody supposed to be on the site as a city's engineer, or, I, I don't know? Who's supposed to be monitoring to make sure that the subdivision conditions are?
I don't think there was a condition of approval that somebody be monitoring the project. Normally, that happens for riparian zone.
So if I could, through the chair, I, I appreciate the comments from the chair, and I'll, I'll, I'll just run this one head-on, which is, there are enough ways to blame or, or to derive problems with this that it's uncomfortable, certainly. Commissioner Gossett sent us an email late Sunday night, whole, you know, identifying concerns about the tree protection plan and whether it was properly staked, marked, fenced, all of those things. And then obviously, it kind of cascaded from that point in terms of, well, what else is happening or not happening on this? Bottom line is, is that the, the owner and the contractor did not pay attention adequately to the conditions of approval and the mitigated negative declaration and the provisions that were in those conditions of approval, particularly with, with that. And they should have been more careful about that. Frankly, it goes back before that point, which is that, based on what we can tell, the grade differential on the, for the street itself was changed substantially, and we reviewed and approved that as the city. And we did not pick up and question and challenge the issue of the tree and the root protection, and that is on us. Now, the issue of construction versus that really is a non-point, because once, once that happened, in essence, the mistake was made, and we're, we're, we're working our way around that point. So this is the mea culpa point here, where we all have some blame in this. And, you know, our hope is to move forward from here in terms of how do we move forward? When we realized that there had been this significant change in the grade of the road itself, we obviously reached out to the applicant and asked for this arborist report to be done. Scott went out, met with them, because we had, you know, absolute concerns and everything with this deal. I think the question of safety is always a question. It's always something that we're worried about. And frankly, the, you know, nearby, we had other trees, but, you know, on the church site, they removed those trees after much wringing of their hands and, but also hitting the Ted Adcock Community Center a couple of times with large trees. Those concerns about, you know, safety and everything are, are something that we take as real issues and concerns. So I, this is more of an answer of just, you know, where do we sit, which is that we all messed up a bit on this one, and, you know, and we cannot and will not allow that to happen prospectively. But I cannot answer to this one other than the fact that we're trying to make it as right as we possibly can. And I think there are some conditions. I think that the applicant, I'm guessing, would be willing to have a more detailed arborist report done. We've remained in, in contact with, talked to the original arborist. He's still working. We could certainly ask to bring that individual back on. He was going to sit in the meeting, but ended up, because we had this other report, stepped back away from it. So we can get to those issues and, and work forward in that, if that is the commission's desire. If it is something you do not wish to convey in the conditions of approval, we can certainly take back that understanding that we need to look at that from a concern of safety and have a conversation about what that looks like. Please.
If the road was graded lower than it should have been, are the pads now also going to be lower than they should? And then how does that affect the height? I mean, because I know we have a height restriction, 28 feet, so did they, begs the next question to my head, of the, are the pads being elevated based on a new grade level versus the existing grade level? I'm just wondering how this is all going to pan out in the, because my understanding is that the, the height is from existing grade to 28 feet.
So the issue is, is not about the grade level point of where the, where the asphalt level is, it's the subgrade and the, and the digging out from that point. So there's no change in the overall grade from where pads were anticipated to be. Obviously, there's some variation as you get to construction of the units and your fine grading and dealing with that. But there, that was not the issue. Apparently, in the original, with the original subdivider, they thought they were going to have a very shallow, a road cut, basically a six-inch road cut, and I think partially driven by the arborist's report concerns about the root depth and everything of this deal. When you actually go to designing this with the soil conditions that exist and everything of that deal, they had to go to a deeper, a deeper road cut to basically build a subbase and to build, even though it's a private street, to build a, a, a street that would meet the requirements. Also, you've got utilities and all kinds of things in there. So I, 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 you know, I'd be lying if I had the absolute answer to how all of this occurred, but the best forensics I can land on is they were way over, over stating the, the shallow depth of, of the driveway in the street in the original subdivision process. And maybe Charlie's here and can, can answer still to that point, but, 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 you know, the reality is.
John, I was just trying to interrupt you. So we can ask for an arborist to be on site for all grading, correct?
Sure.
We can ask for, before the final grading is put in place, for the arborist to review that plan and make sure it satisfies the conditions of approval that we put in place, correct? And we can establish a replacement ratio of a healthy and appropriate tree. The city has a standard that they've used in the past. I, I'm not an, I'm not an arborist or a landscape architect, but I know that we have talked about certain-sized box trees that can fit into the lot, but there's a replacement ratio that we've used in the past, and it's typically three to one for something like this. Those are things we can attach as a condition of approval.
Three to one has been a common mitigation, and absolutely you could.
And a healthy and appropriate. And a healthy and appropriate species. So there's a lot of concern about the trees and I think we've, we've expressed that. Are there any concerns about the trees? Because I want to put that issue to rest if we can.
Yes, one last thing.
Please.
John also mentioned a, a possibility of some kind of new study. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but if the arborist, um, has some recommendations that, that run deeper than, um, than just going out there and checking the roots.
I, I would, that's why I was, that's what I was getting to with like have an arborist provide a final review of the grade. Not do a study, but just have an arborist do a final review and say, look, this is the best we can do with what's been approved. It substantially conforms with what was previously approved. That's what I would.
Great, thank you.
At this point. Commissioner, Vice Chair Gossett.
I don't see the benefit of bringing in, even if we brought in the same arborist to come up and tell us, again, the trees are damaged, they've been mispruned in the past, there's a current grade differential of the root system, irregardless of what happened with the road system. We did cut into the roots on the north side. The trees have canker, I think I already said that. So, and he rated them poor. And, and he also said trees don't do well in construction projects. So he was, what is he going to say that's different today? Oh, now the trees are healthy, uh, they had a lot of water, they were irrigated, you know, weekly for the past seven years? I, I don't know. I mean, I don't understand the benefit of bringing him back to give us another report where his number one recommendation was to remove the trees.
I, I hear you. So I'm not asking him to come back and give us a report. I think it's more of, the objective, objective would be to do the best you can to maintain the trees as long as you can in the development, which is, but I'm, I'm not advocating to remove the trees.
I respect that. It's okay if you don't advocate for that. I will advocate differently.
That's fine.
You know, and we could disagree and I like that I can respectfully disagree with you. I would advocate that we remove the trees and come up with a tree plan that is beautiful, that is safe, that survives a small, um, pervious footprint. Because we're going to have concrete on both sides, or asphalt. So, you know, we have street trees that do well in sidewalks, that have a very small pervious box. And I'm not suggesting taking them down and do a three to one replacement. But if that's the rule, I mean, we'll have to follow those rules. But I think the site is going to be beautiful. I'd like it to be beautiful and safe.
And I've received nothing, and especially with a report that just came out today that indicates it's not safe. I mean, that's, trees are inherently risky. I, I know the old arborist report, I read it when it first came out. Trees have issues and I have these trees on my, my property, um, so I'm very familiar with them. But I, I, and we have a difference of opinion on this one, but it's, so there's a situation with the trees. We've had some discussion on it and I'm unclear where we're going to end up on it. I want to go back to the variance on number 10. So there's three paths forward with number 10. We approve, so actually I want to ask city staff this question. Can we approve the whole project and pull number two, the variance for number 10 out?
Yes, that's certainly an option. You know, another option that I, I see is that the planning commission could not approve the, the variance and defer the design of lot 10 back to the architectural advisory committee for review and still approve the, the new residents there. I think that's an option. So, um, something to consider.
I'd.
You know, I'd also probably recommend getting feedback from the applicant just to get his, you know, comfort level on, on things too.
So, so that's another option. So it's approve with the variance, don't approve with the variance and push it back to ADU, the, sorry, the AAC for a recommendation on what to do. Another one might be to, uh, if this is truly for affordable housing, to attach a condition of approval tonight that puts a deed restriction on the ADU to make it below market rate housing or affordable housing permanently. I think those are options that we've looked at in the past for properties. So I would love to get the applicant's perspective on, on this and what they'd want us to do here. Because I think what I'm hearing is that you, there's consensus to move forward to approve the project. The only thing that is problematic is number 10. And I, I don't see a majority of this commission supporting number 10. Come back to that. Please, I'm opening it up for public comment.
So can you repeat the last option that you said with the deed restriction on the ADU?
So, um, in the past, we've had applicants apply for a measure D with an ADU. And one in particular on Jenna Lane, uh, made the point that their ADU was a low income, uh, ADU. And so we attached a deed restriction on it so that it was a low income ADU in perpetuity. So that they couldn't just move their grandmother into the $3 million house they just built and call it an ADU. I'm trying to look through the tool bag of things we've used in the past and say, if this is an ADU that's helping address the housing crisis we have, which, you know, we have a need to fulfill low income housing and very low income housing, that's an option. I don't like sitting up here and designing your project at the last minute. That might be something you would look at. I think Scott presented an option, which is, hey, look, we'll approve, we may approve the whole project and we'll send number 10 back for, for separate discussion with the AAC and have them come back on that one item, which wouldn't affect the other pieces of the project. That might be the best op. Well, that might be the best option, but I'm curious what your thoughts are on that.
So my question to you is, are you denying the variance on lot 10?
We haven't voted on it.
So if you, if you vote on it and you deny it, would you, would you approve the other 11?
We can approve the project without granting the variance. And then you would have an ambiguous situation with number 10, which you could go back to the city and you could come forward with another design down the road. We don't even, that's.
So that would be without the ADU and without conforming to the 15-foot setback?
We would, we would, you would have to go through the whole planning process for that project. That, it would be treated as a separate project in that sense. And so if, now, for the record, I think we have a couple of issues here that I've heard that are problematic, which is, the applicant was acting in good faith, came up with the design, this has gone to the coastal commission for review. People were using a map as, oh, this is what we're supposed to use. And late in the game, that changed, right? As we came, is that fair, Scott?
Yes. Correct. After the, the two AAC reviews, it was revealed that the buildable area that was shown on an exhibit and provided to the applicant to go design the houses did not meet the, the street facing side setback. In most cases it's more restrictive, but in the case of this corner lot, it's less restrictive than the street facing side setback. Our, our applicant designed the house to meet the buildable area that encroached into the street facing side setback. So that, that was, that was part of this, you know, this, the story behind this.
So let me restate this. If, if it was a, somebody reviewed this and didn't understand what the rules were for this lot because of where it was situated?
In, yes, in.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Well, help me understand this, John, please.
What I was going to ask for the chair is, is it, is at some point in the near future, could we have a five-minute break to, um, to consult with, with our attorney to try to formulate a recommendation back to you in terms of how you might approach this issue? And to get to a point of some recommendation to you, we've, we've thrown out a few options on that.
I, I think that would be a good idea. I do want to go back to the trees for discussion now. So, um, if you would like, I still have public comment is still open. If you want to share any other thoughts now, you can assure you, we will give you another opportunity to speak to us this evening. But I don't know if there's anything else that you want to share or any clarifying questions you have.
So the only thing I do want to clarify is on our rendition for lot 10, it does show the long side. So when there was a comment from David regarding the house looking huge, you're looking at it from the side view. And even if it was a 30-foot house, it would look that big from the side. Because the, the, the depth of the house is not going to change, it's only the width of it. So we are basically, if we comply with the 15-foot setback, we're taking 10 feet off of that side. And, and that's, you know, that, that rendition probably wouldn't change very much whether we build that house or build a house that is 10 feet, uh, less on the width.
That's a very helpful point, thank you.
Yeah, so just, I mean, we should have probably drawn it, uh, from the front like the other homes. So it was more of an applicable rendition, but we wanted to reflect the larger side.
Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry, are we looking at Church Street or Creekside?
That is, that is the view from Church Street.
Okay.
And that's the long side.
Creek's behind it.
Yes, okay, so it's not like the side of the house, it's the front of the house facing Creekside.
Oh.
Or Church Street.
Yeah, it's not the Creekside side.
But it looks like a front entrance.
That is, that's a front entrance for the ADU.
Oh, that's, okay, yeah, okay. I wouldn't even know that's the ADU.
It, it is the ADU and it's attached ADU, so I'm not really sure how, well, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, so I'm going to close public comment and we're just going to go back to discussion for, unless there's anything else that you wanted to add.
I do want to clarify one thing. I think that entrance, uh, so that entrance is the main entrance to the main house.
Okay.
The ADU is facing Creekside. So most likely all of that would have to be redesigned.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close public comment. That is the front of the house and it, it's, that's fine, it's, it's on Church.
Yeah, I, I assumed that that was the ADU entrance since it was the side yard, the side setbacks.
It's perfectly fine on either side with the residential design guidelines.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions on number 10 or comments on number 10? I want to go back to the trees before we break, just so we can have everything that's open addressed. Thoughts on the trees? Is this something we need to take action on other than some of the things I've mentioned? Or, I mean, I don't, I don't know what you guys want to do with the trees.
I don't either. But I would say that the, um, the, if we could somehow apply a little pressure on the developers to follow the rules and to be more mindful of the root system, maybe build the, maybe, I don't know. The city kind of has to work it out with them. But the, um, um, maybe more than a three to one would apply pressure. I don't know what would apply pressure. I, it doesn't seem like there's.
Let's apply pressure and do the appropriate thing.
Yeah, right.
I think, I think I would look to city staff to come up with a recommendation around what the replacement ratio would be. And I would like to see the arborist, language around having the arborist on site for all future grading. I mean, that is in effect a penalty to have to have a paid person on staff to pay attention to what's going on. And I do think having. Road to make sure that it's appropriate. I think those are things that I would look at, but I defer to city staff. Commissioner Johannes, you have some other?
So pressure in regards to having somebody out there the whole time or something else?
Yes, I mean, um.
I mean, it's not, you, you can't, it's not that you're pressuring somebody, it's more of, the point is, they haven't followed the rules. So we have an issue. Somebody had to go out there and look at it and make sure that, you know, and there were some details that weren't followed with the original plan. We want to make sure moving forward, when any grading happens, that somebody who can look after the health of the trees is there. Because there already has been a failure to follow the rules. I think that's, that's more of a point.
That's pretty accurate, yeah.
We don't want to pressure people. Any other questions? I'd like to take a 10-minute break unless you have questions for us.
Um, only before we, we break, it would be helpful and I know, you know, it, in, in the sense of what, I'm, I'm sensing that there's at least two folks who are not inclined to support the variance tonight. That you don't believe you can make the findings is, it, it's helpful to know just in, in, in the sense of whether that, which would be a denial of that at this point, regardless of, even if it was a two to two vote, that would be a denial. So we're trying to, is that a, am I reading the tea leaves tonight?
So to predict the vote, um, I appreciate Chair Hernandez's, um, suggestion to, um, to come up with a different solution. But I just don't see a need for a var. I don't see the need. I, I, you know, yes, I'm seeing the big house. It doesn't matter whether I'm seeing it from the side or seeing it from the front. I'm seeing a big house. And I just don't, I don't see that, um, basically buying, um, a deed restriction by, by giving a variance is, um, kind of the right thing for us to do.
And I heard Commissioner Johannes indicating a similar, a similar take, but I don't want to, I'm not asking for.
You know, I just wanted to understand a little bit, you know, commis, uh, the chair mentioned that there's possibilities of trying to look at deed restrictions, um, and, you know, cited the Jenna Lane. But we also know the Jenna Lane's deed restriction, they rescinded it. They didn't want to do that in the end. So I'm just wondering what else we could do. And then how does a deed restriction work on an attached ADU?
I mean, I, I don't even know if it's, if it's an option. I think if I could reset, um, those are, those are great things to look at. What I'm hearing here is for the trees, we'd like to see a plan. For the variance, there's some ambiguity as to where we might land with the variance. There are some things that I would like to see city staff come to us after the recess that address the applicant's due process, um, rights here, given what they've done in good faith. I don't want to create a situation for the city. I also do not want to substantially remove the applicant's right to enjoy their property. I agree that it doesn't necessarily have to be as big as it is here. So I'd like to see some options. There's a lot of work that's gone into it and this is, this is sort of the one sticking point. I will say, this is the only integrated development project I've seen in the 10 years I've been here where somebody's come to us with, said, look, I'll build low income housing, I'll make it fit in the neighborhood, I'll respect the riparian corridor and the rules that you lay down. And, you know, I'll add in some ADUs as well. So they're maximizing the space. And in the past, in a situation like this, we've been amenable to a variance. When you look at, especially because we're not just looking at one project, we're looking at the project site as a whole and the work that's been done there. And so that's what I would leave everybody with and I'd ask city staff to come back with some answers to some of those questions. And if it takes more than 10 minutes, we might look at a continuance. But I would, um, I would say, let's at least take 10 minutes and regroup.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to reopen the planning commission meeting. Scott, John, do you want to?
If, if I, if I could ask the commission, the chair, to reopen the public hearing and allow the applicant to speak briefly, and I think that will then direct a pathway forward.
I will be happy to do so. However, I would like to make, have somebody make a motion to continue the meeting to 10:55.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes three to one.
[laughing]
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to open it up for public comment if the applicant would like to speak.
So we would like to withdraw Lot 10 from the application and request approval of the other 11 lots tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close public comment.
So if I could, what we heard from the commission was, absent the conversation about if that's acceptable to you, then we would then focus solely on what could be done in terms of additional conditions related to the trees, if there's a desire for that. I think Scott can walk through what we would frame a condition of approval related to the trees. And any motion would need to include, if there is a motion in support of the remainder of this project, that motion would include just a note that all references to Lot 10 removed, and all of those would be removed from the resolution of approval, which would ultimately be signed by the chair if so approved. What the applicant has indicated to staff, that they will look to resubmit, redesign, or a different, a different something on, on that and return back with a separate application at a later point.
Okay. Scott, do you want to walk us through the recommendations that staff has with respect to the trees?
Certainly. So what we recommend is adding a condition of approval that requires the arborists to review the grading plan and include onsite monitoring of any work within the vicinity of the Cypress trees, as well as updating the arborist report to reassess potential root impacts that may have taken place, and include a maintenance plan on the trees. And then in the event that a tree does need to be removed, then of course a heritage tree removal permit would be required and three-to-one replacement of the trees, so.
And you have a standard for the three-to-one replacement, for the certain-sized tree?
Yes, normally a 24-inch box, so.
That's the minimum standard, correct?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just to clarify, are, there is a biologist on that site looking daily and monitoring daily, and the monitoring, our recommendation would be to include that in the list of duties that the biologist would do while they're out there. There would be field notes reflecting that, and also direction that the biologist communicate with the arborist should there be concerns and issues raised in the process of their work. But that's certainly in your discretion to, to determine that's appropriate.
Does that type of monitoring fall under the normal purview of that type of biologist in that firm?
It would be fully within their normal range of duties and responsibilities on the job site.
And would the city staff commit to make sure that they alert the biologist when these types of activities are planned to happen?
Cross my height, cross my heart, and hope to never have to come and mea culpa again.
Very good. Anything else, Scott?
No.
Please.
Sorry, yeah, nothing on the trees, so the trees are done. I have something else.
Please.
Okay. As far as a condition of approval, and I don't know if this is necessary, if it's already addressed in the, in the attachment one, which is the resolution, because there was, there's a grading, arborist is going to do a grading plan and making sure it's, everything's in, according to the correct gradient and grade, I just want to make sure that also all the pads that are being built for the homes are going to be measured from the existing grade as it stands today, so that we're not elevating the pads and making, you know, the homes higher than what the existing grade is. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not fixing one thing and then causing something else to be a problem. So I just want to make sure that if it's covered in here, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that because the road was lowered and now it's going to have to come back to, I'm thinking existing grade.
Well, again, I want to be clear for, so you can be comfortable with this. The road grade was not changed. The finished grade has not changed. The depth of excavation was changed, not the finished grade.
Okay, so the finished grade, so the grade as, as where the lots will be built is to the existing grade, from, it will be measured from the existing grade up as far as the height?
Yes. Now, the conditions, the mitigation and the conditions of approval for the subdivision because of the flood study and everything that was going on, requires that each floor elevation be at a certain height, and that will not be affected. That will still be compliant.
But you're still meeting the 28-foot height limit?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then one other thing with regards...
So just to be clear, there's no change necessary in a condition of approval because we've already, it's already been addressed.
Right. I just, so that's been clarified. And then the other thing is, as far as the maintenance of the detention basin, the bioswale, oh, I don't even know if it's called a bioswale. It's called a detention basin, I think, here. Is that part of the HOA?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, we had the project biologist raise his virtual hand, and I think he may have some.
And who is John Waite as well?
Patrick Coburnis is the...
Well, I see two people with their hands raised. So I am going to open it to public comment because I promised that if we had a biologist here, I would listen to them.
I think also he might be raising his hand. We were on mute till just a moment ago, so he might not have been able to hear us. But did you want to speak, Patrick, on anything on the project? He's got to unmute himself.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to make sure I could hear you guys.
I'm sorry, Patrick. Could you?
That's all right.
So, so you may not have heard this, but I think what we've, what Mr. Doughty from the city said was that we plan to have whoever the biologist is on site monitor the trees when there's any...
He's got to unmute himself.
I didn't have a question, I just wanted to make sure that I could hear you guys.
I'm sorry, Patrick.
You cut out.
Could you...
That's all right.
So you may not have heard this, but I think what we've, what Mr. Doughty from the city said was that we plan to have whoever the biologist is on site monitor the trees when there's any grading. But I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to the conversation at this point.
As far as monitoring the trees, just making sure that the roots don't get damaged, is that the main thing that we would be monitoring?
Correct. Or the trees get run into by bulldozers or things like that, that bad things happen when there's grading going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And since I've opened it for public comment, I'm obligated to let Mr. Waite speak if he has a public comment. Mr. Waite?
I was actually trying to raise my hand to let you guys know that your speaker wasn't on, so I'm good.
Thank you so much.
My apologies.
Scott, is there anything else that we need to cover from... Oh, may close public comment? Is there anything else we need to cover?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I'm going to look over to my fellow commissioners and ask if there are any other conditions of approval that they feel necessary, or any other items they wish to discuss before we move to a resolution.
I would just want to say I appreciate the withdrawing Lot 10 as an alternative so that we're not trying to legislate from up here. That's, I think that's a really good solution, so thank you.
Can I get a motion? Do you want me to do this one? I'd like to have a... Can you hear me okay? I'd like to have a condition of approval of the matter before us... Oh, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item before us with the condition that we have an arborist review the final grading plan, and it conforms with their recommendations. We have onsite monitoring by licensed biologist or arborist. We reassess, whenever there's grading. We reassess, have an arborist, as part of the report, have the arborist reassess whether there's any damage to the root structure. We have a maintenance plan for the trees, and we have a three-to-one replacement with a 24-inch box tree appropriate to the site from the list of approved trees that the city has. And that we also remove Lot 10 from the project, and that can come forward as a separate project down the road. It does not necessarily have to come to the planning commission unless it requires a variance. Can I get a second?
Second.
Would, yes. You're not wishing to comment on the motion. Do you want to discuss the motion? If you would like to discuss the motion, we should discuss it before we vote.
Yes, that's what I would like.
Okay, let's discuss the motion, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the condition of approval for the trees, although I don't agree with that. I don't think it's going to make the situation safe. That's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Okay. You seconded the motion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Goran?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gossett?
No.
And Chair Hernandez?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. This item's closed, thank you. Okay. This should never be an excuse, but one of my colleagues desperately needs to eat some food, so I'd like us to move to, are there any, do we have a staff report or a director's report?
Yes.
We will defer and allow you to move toward adjournment if so choose.
Do we have any planning commissioner comments? Okay. I'd like to get a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor? We're done here. Good night.
You didn't even need to, it ended at 10:30.